Good evening and welcome to the December tenth, twenty eighteen, meeting of the Town of Scarborough Planning Board. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lorraine, could you please call the roll?
Corey Fellows.
Here.
Roger Beely.
Here.
Nicholas McGee.
Here.
Richard DuPerry.
Here.
Rachel Hendrickson.
Here.
Robin Sanders.
Here.
Thank you. Couple of quick housekeeping items. Item number four, minutes will be tabled to the next meeting. We don't have those quite yet. And then item number ten, Infinity Credit Union was tabled at the request of the applicant. Moving on to number five, Sonnensheen Realty LLC requests a site plan amendment review for nine U.S. Route One Portland Volvo, assessors map U fifty, lot eighteen A. Jamel, if you have an introduction to this?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a minor amendment to a recently approved site plan at the Portland Volvo site on nine U.S. Route One. The property is located in the Business Office Research Zoning District, located on Route One, close to the South Portland City Line. The applicant is proposing to install storm drain pipes and drainage structures in an existing open drainage ditch to create a closed drainage system. Drainage infrastructure will be covered with gravel and the space is proposed to be used as temporary parking for construction vehicles on-site. At the conclusion of construction, the area will be loamed and seeded. Given that this area on the property fronts Route One, staff recommends that the applicant enhance the streetscape in this area. Staff would also like to note that the applicant did provide the requested stormwater calculations and staff is satisfied with these materials. So staff has prepared a draft motion with conditions for the board to consider tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamel. And I'll turn over to the applicant.
Sure, thank you very much. My name is Kylie Mason. I'm also here with Dale Akeley, representing the owner. I do have a very exciting rendering to share with you. So just a small area of green space. We have added the three trees in the rendering. We're happy to submit those if the board would like us to do so through staff. But we're happy to add them. We do have some preliminary comments back from DOT. They seem really okay with everything we're doing. We are looking at the potential sizing impacts should an office park be developed on the other side of Route One, just to make sure the sizing is big enough to accept increase in flow. So with that, that's really the crux. We're taking this drainage channel. We're putting it in a pipe. Everything will remain the same, otherwise, with the exception of this green area on top of it now.
Thank you. Before we go to the board, we do have the opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone who'd like to speak on this, come on up. All right, seeing none. Do we have any board comments or questions at this point? Robin? Rachel? Through all the Rs there.
Roger, just to inquire about the trees along the Route One. Do you have any comments regarding that?
Do I have any comments?
Yeah. Your reaction to staff notes?
Oh, I thought it was fine. To add the three trees? To add three trees to the site plan?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I missed a... Okay.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. We're happy to add three trees.
Okay. I'm fine then.
All right? Good, thank you. Yeah, I don't really have anything to add either. This is fairly minor. We actually, we had these materials and reviewed these before the prior meeting and it ended up getting tabled due to time. So I think we've all edited this one pretty thoroughly at this point. Appreciate the applicant's responsiveness on the street trees and other items that were noted. So as staff noted, we do have a draft motion here that I, for our consideration, that I will put forward now. I move to approve the site plan amendment project titled, the project titled Portland Volvo, proposed by Sonnensheen Realty LLC, as depicted on the plan set prepared by Sebago Technics dated October twenty ninth, twenty eighteen. The applicant is proposing to install storm drain pipes and drainage structures in an existing open drainage ditch to create a closed drainage system. Conditions, number one, the drainage infrastructure may be covered with gravel and the space utilized as temporary parking for construction vehicles on the site. The site is to be restored in accordance with approved plans prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Number two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the plan set shall be revised to include, A, the addition of several deciduous trees along the Route One street frontage once construction is completed and the area has been loomed and seeded; B, a plan note on the overall grading plan, sheet seven of eighteen, stating that the maintenance and replacement responsibility of the closed stormwater system shown within the storm drain easement is the sole responsibility of the owner and future owners of the property; C, an updated construction phasing plan for the project that includes information about how this portion of the property will be used during construction. Condition number three, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall, A, edit the updated easement deed as suggested by the town's attorney; and B, provide documentation from the main DOT stating that they approve the applicant's request to modify and extend the existing drainage infrastructure owned by the main DOT. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Second, this is a motion.
Mr. Chair, if I might ask one clarification? Because we have a building occupancy switch, so we're currently in the existing building. They're going to move into the new building and then they're going to demolish the existing building. Could we make sure that it's the final occupancy certificate? And not that one that's going to cover the temporary shift into the new building? Because that, since they're going to be demolishing, that area is right in front of...
There's no occupancy, though, with the demolition, though, correct?
There's the occupancy, they would be in the new building with the demolition.
So are you suggesting it goes with the demolition permit or...
I'm suggesting the completion of it would have to be after the dump, because they're going to, if they seed this and they're demolishing the building, they're going to rip up all that grass in the process as they're pulling it out of there while they're in the new building. So could we have it tied to a final performance guarantee or some other final occupancy? I apologize, it was so simple before.
All right. We're just looking at this on the fly.
Do you have any ideas, Angela?
Let me release it.
Right. So I think, just to clarify, there might actually be a temporary C of O in place for the building permit. So I think I just wanted to make sure that they're not, they're not going to be in violation.
So you think there's a temporary for the switchover and then you get...
A final.
The final...
So if it's just tied to the final.
And then you demo the building?
Well, yeah, they would demo the building, I think, then they would get their final C of O, right? So the site is all established.
So it would be a conditional certificate of occupancy that you'd originally get?
I think they're, I think the plan is a temporary C of O, right? I think that's the building.
Well, yeah, Dale Akeley for Sunshine Realty. Could you issue, can we plan on a temporary C of O so that we'll be able to occupy the new building, do our demo, final site cleanup, and then the final C of O would be issued? And we'd wrap up any performance guarantee items and that sort of thing? Is that a feasible path?
I guess I...
Maybe that's a codes question.
That's what I guess I'm giving it, yeah.
We could, we could potentially modify condition one so that it says, "In accordance with the approved plans prior to the release of the performance guarantee."
I love it.
And then that way, we're not...
That way, they're held to it.
Yeah. Any issues with the board on that? Any comments on that?
Motion to amend your motion. To replace the words "issuance of a certificate of occupancy" with the release of a performance guarantee.
Second. You have amended, seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All in favor of the amended motion.
All in favor of the amended motion? Thank you.
Thank you so much, sorry for the confusion.
Thank you. Moving on to item number six, Rainin Properties LLC and Chamberlain Construction, Inc. Request an amended subdivision plan review, Sixth Amendment, for the Dunston Crossing subdivision, Broad Term Road and U.S. Route One, assessors map U thirty, lots sixteen and seventeen. Jamel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item was also tabled due to late hour at the last meeting, so it carried over to tonight. This project's located in the TBC and BR two zoning districts in the Dunston Crossing subdivision. So the applicant's proposing to relocate a phase and property line between phases four and five of the subdivision to allow for the reallocation of a duplex from phase five to phase four. At this time, staff has no further comments about their proposal.
Thank you. Is anyone from the applicant's team here, if you have anything to add?
Not at this time. I'm actually filling in Kylie Mason again, filling in for Sean Frank. The applicant and Sean couldn't be here tonight, so hopefully I can answer any questions.
Okay. We also have the opportunity for any public comment on this item. Just introduce yourself, please.
Certainly. Chairman Fellows and members of the board, my name is Michael Coniff. I appear tonight on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Dunston Crossing Condominium Association. The association represents forty-eight homeowners, a great number of whom are here today, and I present these remarks on their behalf. So as described in the governing documents, the Dunston Crossing Condominium Association is an owner of the property that surrounds the condominium structures at Dunston Crossing. And the common elements include the real property, but in the area that would be impacted by the request that is pending before the board. Therefore, our association has standing to comment and to raise objections to a grant of the request made by Ryan Properties and Chamberlain Construction, which is a related company of Chamberlain Homes. Now, to set the stage, the Dunston Crossing Condominium Association Board applauds the vision of Elliot Chamberlain, the president of Chamberlain Homes, and the efforts of Elliot, his colleagues at Chamberlain Homes and Chamberlain Construction, and their contractors and subcontractors to make the envisioned Dunston Crossing neighborhood a reality, a goal that our condominium association shares. The board also thanks you and your predecessors on the planning board to help make this neighborhood a reality. It has turned into a wonderful place to live, a perfect community. But we also thank you for your continuing oversight as you fulfill your obligations to ensure that Chamberlain Homes, Ryan Properties, and the developers, subcontractors, and other contractors fulfilled the requirements that the planning board has set and that they be fulfilled diligently. Overall, the collaboration between the condominium association and the Chamberlain Companies has been good and the unit owners have been generally pleased with the workmanship of Chamberlain Homes. However, there have been some differences of approach and opinion, even significant disagreements between the association and the developer. For example, there are three very substantial issues that are still pending and are increasingly undermining the confidence that the association has in the developer's ability to fulfill its obligations to the planning board's approved plan, of which this amendment is part of, and to the Dunston Crossing community that is under development. The first issue involves the persistent deterioration and disintegration of brick stairways due to poor workmanship on the brick stairs installation at the two row houses on Waldron Drive, which the association asserts is the responsibility of Chamberlain Homes to fix. Thus far, the association has expended approximately forty thousand dollars to repair the stairs and anticipates that the total cost will exceed eighty thousand dollars after full remediation has been completed. The association contends that Chamberlain Homes is responsible for the remediation and that Chamberlain Homes has refused to act in good faith to repair the stairs. A civil suit has been initiated. Mediation has been proposed, to no avail at this juncture. An arbitration of the dispute may become necessary. The second issue involves the developer's decision not to substantially complete the paving of McCant Way and Larry Falls Drive, apparently to facilitate the construction in phase four and for the convenience of the developer. As a result, the town will not accept the roads as municipal property, meaning that the town does not have the responsibility to plow snow from the roads during the winter. Although the roadways are unfinished for the convenience of the developer and the association believes that the governing documents make the developer responsible for clearing snow and other maintenance tasks, the developer has refused to accept those responsibilities, which may also lead to litigation, including arbitration, to be brought by the master association, of which the condominium association is a constituent member. The third issue involves the landscaped retention pond at the border of phases two and three, I believe, at the end of Waldron Drive. The association believes that despite considerable deliberations by and requirements imposed by this board and other responsible governing agencies, the retention pond has not been maintained in accord with the maintenance plan approved by the board. As a result, there may also be significant costs to remediate the condition of the pond, which includes a catanine tails and algae infestation. The association, in its capacity as a constituent member of the master association, believes that it is the responsibility of the developer to remediate the problem. None of these three issues, among others, is insurmountable. But so far, the developer has persistently resisted any meaningful discussions about resolving the problems. So long as the intransigence exists, the association cannot have confidence that the applicants in this particular application pending before the board will discharge their responsibilities to the municipality, meaning the planning board and the town, as well as the community. Consequently, the condominium association respectfully requests that the planning board either table the application until these issues are resolved or to approve the request, the application contingent on satisfactory remediation of these three issues, each of which has a bearing on the applicant's preparedness to fulfill its responsibilities for development of the Dunston Crossing neighborhood according to the overarching plan of which this application is a part of that has been previously approved by the board. Now, we thank you, I speak for forty-eight families, for your attention to our perspectives. I will take any questions that you might have. I do have copies of my written remarks for each of you that I will hand to you as I head back to my seat. But I would welcome any questions from you.
Thank you. We'll have, any questions will come through the chair and through the board once we're done with all public comment.
Okay.
I wanted to first give the opportunity for anyone else who may want to...
Thank you.
Come up, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else?
My name is Richie Axelson and I reside at eight Colby Drive, also in Dunston Crossing. And I think, you know, Mike summed it up really crystal clear. And I've lived in the neighborhood for three years and although I will give praise to Elliot on building a very, very strong, nice home, his maintenance skills or thereafter, if you will, are less than desirable. Many, many times, there's been situations in which there's been homeowners, as well as condo owners, who have complained or issued a complaint regarding our neighborhood, something going on with it. And if it gets done, it takes an enormous amount of time. Although I can't speak on behalf of what Mike spoke, and he spoke pretty clear about the issues going on with the condo association, I'll just speak on behalf of the situation that Mike touched upon with the plowing of the phase three. I've had endless conversations with both the Public Works Director, Mike Shaw, and I've had the opportunity of speaking with Angela Blanchard, which I thank you very much. And from everything that I can gather, it is the developer's responsibility to take care of that parcel of land, that, those roads, whether it be plowing, maintenance, a pothole, whatever that might be. It is not nothing to do with a homeowner or the condo association, nor should we have to have that taken out of our budgets or our pockets to maintain that road. And in a meeting, a master association meeting, he's defied that. And after speaking with Mr. Shaw, the Public Works Director, he had great concerns because when it was brought to their attention to ask if they would plow that area, being the city and it's a non-accepted road, there were certain restrictions put out that they would do that for a certain amount. But it was under his understanding, it was directly through Chamberlain Homes and the Town of Scarborough, not anything to do with the association. And when I explained that to him, that we bought, as a board, we put in the minutes that we would accept the fact, because we obviously, it was a safety issue, needed these roads plowed, we would like to find out the, whose responsibility this actually is. Again, I, from the information I've gathered, both from Angela and from Mr. Shaw, it's his responsibility. And I will just say this, that when, when we as homeowners and condo owners have to continually pay for this stuff, and I'm hearing from Mr. Shaw that this could be a legal issue because it's coming from Elliot and Chamberlain Homes that it's between him and the town, it's really not. Because we're paying for this. We're paying for these roads to be cleared. So as Mike said, I would ask that you either table this or oppose it at this point, until these conditions can be followed, both for the homeowner and for the condo owners. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much for the comments and, possible, there may be some follow-up questions. Roger, you want to start off?
Thank you.
You don't have to.
No, I will. It seems to me that what we're confronted with here is almost an administrative issue, just changing the line, the phasing line on this particular thing. But I do believe that these homeowners have a serious issue and I'm not sure where to go with that. I imagine it would be in the purvey of the building inspector? I'm not sure. But it seems to me, if we took care of this tonight with the condition that we won't do anything further beyond that until this situation is resolved, if that makes any sense.
Well, we can, let's...
I mean, is this, to me, this is just an administrative issue tonight, just changing the boundary line on the phases.
And we can flesh that out. I mean, I think if we were to approve that, I don't know that we would necessarily have to state in a condition that we won't approve anything else because they would, just based on the process, they would have to get further approvals. But I think we need to make sure we fully, fully understand that.
I mean, it seems to me these homeowners have a very legitimate grievance, or a series of grievances. And I don't know who's responsible for that. It seems to me someplace in the planning department, the building inspector, or whatever, and to make sure they're fulfilling the contract. I'll leave it at that right now and listen to what other board members...
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So I think, if I'm understanding correctly, even an administrative moving of a boundary line at this point, the reason they want to do this is so they can build in another building, right? And if we have previous phasing that doesn't seem to be completed or is being completed to subpar standards, is it wise for us to say, yes, put another building in the mix even before they haven't taken care of somebody, perhaps, in what sounds like some performance issues? So, I mean, from where I'm sitting, I would like to hear, you know, I don't think this board needs to get involved with a potential legal battle. And we have to address what we have in front of us. But I, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Adding another building into the mix would be prudent, given what we're hearing. But at least not with an applicant, you know... But at least not with an applicant, you know, here to help sort this out a little. So, that would be my, one of my bigger complaints.
Thanks.
I think, if I may, Mr. Chair, I think I would offer the following. I was certainly involved in the planning of the project and its original phases, but I would offer the following. Performance on a previously approved and under-construction project is probably going through a guaranteed process with a release, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Sure.
I don't think it's going to help me for you guys, or help you guys if I speak into this, but my assumption is that their performance guarantee has not been released fully.
Correct.
So, my, my assumption would be this, and I think that this is an administrative function, we're moving a lot line, one building, but that in its own right carries a new performance measure with it. And their, their current performance guarantee has not been released for final paving. And so, that final paving performance guarantee is what's ensuring the completion of the roadways for town acceptance. And I would say that while they're still under construction, it's still a project not yet completed, and would offer that, I think certainly there's some, there's some things that can be enforced, that are enforcement issue, but don't necessarily fall under a lot line adjustment, but that, certainly there is a level of purview there.
Thank you. Jamelle, did you have something? I can just add to that. I'm sorry, we're in board discussion now. Thank you.
Just a quick point of clarification before we go down further. The applicant's not proposing an additional building, they're just reallocating it within the phase. So, the overall density of the project remains the same. So, there's not, there's not, nothing additional, it's just within Phase Four instead of Phase Five. Just wanted to point that out.
Thanks. Robin?
Yeah, and it sounds, to me, it sounds like the majority of the issues raised this evening, too, are for Phase Three, which has, which is separate from what's in front of us tonight, but please correct me if I'm wrong, colleagues. And so, I've, I've wondered about this in the past on other, you know, on other subdivisions, and it's, I think we've gone past Phase Three, we're in Phase Four and Five, and so I think we can really only look at what's in front of us tonight. And I don't have any questions on this administrative type change, like Roger and Nick had sort of said. So, I'm inclined to, again, let the performance guarantee, I, I am very much sorry that there is this issue with trying to live in a neighborhood that's only half-complete. I'm very much, you know, I, I'm sympathetic to that, but unfortunately, what we have in front of us is Phase Four and Five, it's not Phase Three, so that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Rachel?
Yeah, I have to agree with my, my colleagues. Don't think mine is on. I have to agree with my colleagues, who are simply asked to move an already-approved building from one phase of construction to another, and that is not Phase Three. I'm concerned with some of the issues that have been brought up, that have been raised by the condo association, especially in terms of the stormwater management and the degradation of one of the ponds for that, and the existence of algae and cactails. I just don't think that the planning board is actually the board that looks at that. We're asked to move an approved building from one phase to a different phase, that's, that's all we're asked to do. And I don't see our role in enforcing, or forcing, a developer to meet a performance guarantee. There are other ways to go within the town, and I would urge the folks to, to try that.
Thank you, Rachel. Ray?
You know, I think Rachel and Robin stated it pretty well. I, I did have one point of clarification. Is the, the gentleman that spoke first, is the group that he represents actually part of the Dunston Crossing? Okay.
Your question is whether it's.
No, that's, that's my, that was my only question.
I guess it comes from the chair.
Right. So that.
Yeah. I, I have the answer, I'm good. That was my only question.
Thank you.
I saw all the heads nod.
In the second verse, which was master.
Um, yeah. I, I think that, you know, it's important that the performance, that's separate from what we're doing here tonight with this lot line, so it really, although I understand and feel for the, the folks when you're, and the issues that you're having, it's, it's not unfortunate, it's not related to what we're, is related, but I think we have to, you know, there's nothing, we have to pass this, as far as I can see.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, if this is a, it's, these situations can be tough, and I think we're all fully sympathetic, and we periodically see these, and maybe some of us have experienced these situations where you're living sort of the reality of a phased development, and sometimes that can be a little bit messy. And I don't think any of us are questioning that there may have been some issues with workmanship and follow-through, and at the same time, as has been noted, I don't think it's appropriate for us to get really wrapped up in the middle of something particularly that's heading into, or in some cases, already in litigation, and sort of, you know, there are issues there between those two parties, to which the planning board is not really a party. And it's been stated, we're, although it may sometimes be frustrating to members of the public, and sometimes to us frankly, at times depending on the situation, we're ultimately not an enforcement body. The homeowners and citizens certainly have other means, other recourse through the, through the building inspection department, and Public Works, and the way that the performance guarantee is, is enforced. So, I would agree with, with all of that, and I think, again, here, we have to really stay focused on what's, what's truly in front of us, and as has been stated, I would encourage the homeowners to remain engaged, and hopefully, that can be worked out. It's unfortunate that, you know, that Elliot wasn't able to be here this evening, I know this had been tabled from a previous item. You know, this is the first any of us are hearing about this, and I think under the circumstances, for the reasons that have been stated by my colleagues, I think we need to stay focused on this delineation between Phases Four and Five, and all those other means of recourse for the issues that folks are experiencing remain there. So, I don't think this really changes that. So, I'll therefore move to approve the project titled "Sixth amended subdivision plan of Dunston Crossing proposed by Rainin Properties LLC and Chamberlain Construction, Inc., as depicted on the plan set prepared by Sevago Technics dated October 29, 2018. The applicant is proposing to relocate the phased property line between Phases Four and Five. The overall project density and general development pattern remain unchanged. All prior conditions of approval remain in effect."
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just one question, maybe Jamelle can clarify this for myself, as well as the public. When we're talking about a phased development, can I assume that each phase has a performance guarantee associated with, and is there a deadline for that typically? It doesn't just, it's not, you know, unlimited, has, has some point of a period that has to be accomplished, right?
That's a really good question. Actually, the performance guarantees for subdivisions go through our engineering department. So, I'm going to refer to our expert in that, Angela.
Yeah, we. She doesn't mind. We have a performance guarantee for each of the phases, and I will just, just for information purposes, as far as Phase Three goes, typically for acceptance of streets, we don't like to have heavy equipment and vehicles go over our surface paving, that we just accepted a street where damage could occur. So, we did work with the developer to say, you need to have this construction route to get to Phase Three until that's done, so I'll take ownership of some of that, that didn't get surface paved, because we really don't want to accept a street that has damaged new surface pavement on it. So, we did work with, trying to limit the boundaries of where the surface paving happens. When we accept it, we are accepting Phase One and Two, the council has already accepted those as streets. And so, as Kylie had mentioned, so we hold performance guarantee for the remainder of what's in the right-of-way. It sounds like there's some other issues, some out of the right-of-way, some with the pond, those type of things, and I know this has a DEP permit, and is something that gets a recertification through DEP, so they'll be looking at the ponds again. Unfortunately, this subdivision occurred before our post-construction ordinance was in place, which for the public, that means new subdivisions coming in, we do an annual report. The homeowners association or the developer needs to actually provide us the information saying it's being maintained. We put that in place, so this type of thing wouldn't happen, because DEP looks at a longer span. So, while that's not probably reassuring, I will say, we've, we've heard, this isn't the first time that we've heard things aren't being maintained, and that's why we have some measures in place now. And it is something that we can definitely look at, if the pond is one specifically that staff can kind of, can look at. And as Mr. Axel said, I have heard about the plowing, which Public Works does enter into an agreement, has an agreement with Chamberlain Homes to plow, and a part of that agreement is release of liability if things get damaged, and there's certain criteria to make sure, we don't damage our equipment either, they have to have it so it's actually passable, things like that. And that agreement is with the developer, who, as you mentioned, when we read through what was passed through this board, it is on, it appears from staff's point of view that that is on, on his ownership to maintain that for winter operations, and so that's who the town has the agreement with.
Thank you, that's helpful context in the background. Thank you. Any other comments? We still have a seconded motion on the table. All in favor? So that to be unanimous? Item number seven, Valentine Development LLC requests an amended subdivision plan review, Thirteenth Amendment for the Eastern Village subdivision, assessor's map R73, lots 21A and 21B. Jamelle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This project is located in the traditional neighborhood design zoning district, that's the Eastern Village subdivision. The applicant is proposing several updates to the approved 12th amended subdivision plan. Steph has provided the specific proposed modifications in our review memo for tonight's meeting. Steph would like to point out that the applicant is seeking to realign the intersection of Federal Way and Old Eastern Road to a more traditional T-intersection, and the public safety and public works departments do support this proposal. And that's what I have right now.
Thanks, Jamelle, and I will hand it over to Mr. Anderson.
Good morning, Chair, or good evening, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Carrie Anderson, Valentine Development. So, we were on the last, Jennifer, the last meeting, and we tabled it, just to clean a couple of items up. I believe they have since been cleaned up, and Stevie Bushy couldn't be here tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions related to anything with respect to the request and the submission.
Thank you. Before we go to board discussion, is there any public comment on this item? Any board comment or questions at this point? Roger?
The only, the only question I have, you referred to Lot 120, and I could not find 120 on here. Can you point that out?
Sure.
I found 128.
Lot 120 is right here.
Oh, way down here, okay.
And the only other thing I wanted to ask you, and it doesn't really pertain to this, but just in general, could you refresh my, refresh me, when you talk about a town center, what's your vision of what that would look like in the future?
A town center?
Yeah, it's on, it's on your master plan, yeah.
Well, a town center can be a number of different things in traditional development patterns. It's really where you can have some neighborhood retail, you have a mix of uses, neighborhood retail, civic buildings and such that could occur there. It's really meant to be kind of like the central area for your project, whether it's a town, a city, a project, a neighborhood. And when we got the project approved originally, we had a lot of areas that we could do certain things, depending, depending upon how it evolved and how the demand was out in the marketplace. And the reason why we're making some of these changes now is some of those things haven't come to pass, or haven't come to fruition, I should say. So, we're changing it to reflect market conditions, and also where the neighborhood's at, and where we see it going.
Okay. Awesome. Thanks. Anyone else? All right. So, yes, I think this is fairly straightforward, and we appreciate getting the comments from So, without further ado, I will put forward a motion. I move to approve the project titled "Eastern Village," proposed by Valentine Development LLC, as depicted on the plan set prepared by Stan Tech dated October 29, 2018, with the following findings and conditions. Findings as stated, it'll be part of the record, I will not read them all. Conditions, number one, prior to the release of the Mylar four recording, the applicant shall address the traffic peer review comments and traffic solutions memorandum dated December 1st, 2018. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. And number two, the existing conditions from the planning board approvals for the 11th and 12th amended subdivision plans will remain in effect. That is the motion.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, can I make one comment?
Yes.
I believe the traffic comments have been, maybe it's just a matter of policy on the, on the board's part, but I believe we've addressed the, the traffic issues. Unless I'm missing something, and maybe that, your, your words didn't allude to the fact that we weren't, I don't know, I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, I think, did you want to?
I can jump in, Carrie. There were a few minor slant and striping additions recommended in the memo, that, that's what that entails.
But we can't do that prior to release of the Mylar, can we? Because we have to have the Mylar recorded to be able to facilitate the work.
Well, I, we would just like to see them reflected on the plans.
Oh, okay.
Not on the face of the earth.
Okay, on the Mylar or on the subdivision plan?
On the subdivision, on the T-intersection, the diagram you guys provided.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
That's good clarification. Anything else? Pollenfetter? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Item number eight, Chris and Joanne Capron requests an advisory opinion for a miscellaneous appeal for a conversion of a non-conforming use for 10 Pine Point Road, assessor's map U34, lot 22.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just sort of describe the process for the board tonight. So, the applicant has applied for a miscellaneous appeal to the zoning board of appeals for a conversion of a legal non-conforming use. So, in accordance with the zoning ordinance, before making a decision on any miscellaneous appeal, the ZBA shall refer the appeal to the planning board for an advisory opinion. The advisory opinion should be based on the non-conformant standards found in the zoning ordinance. So, the existing non, approved non-conforming use on the property is a single-family dwelling unit, and the applicant is proposing to convert the single-family dwelling unit into a two-family dwelling. Minimal comments here, given the proposal, staff encourages the applicant to delineate the parking spaces on-site to ensure safe internal vehicle circulation. And that's what I have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item? All right. Any board comment? Any questions from the board? Any questions from the board? Going, going? All right. Yeah, I don't really have any particular issues with this either. I would just echo, and I think, I think I can speak to the board in saying that we endorse staff's recommendations regarding delineating parking spaces. And beyond that, wish you luck at ZBA, and we're sending a positive opinion. Thank you. Item number nine, BBS Enterprises, Inc. requests a site plan review for 62 Muzzy Road, assessors map R-37, lot, our lot 38. Jamel?
Thank you. I believe the applicants are here. There we go. Just make sure. So this is located in the TVC zoning district. The applicant is proposing to construct a 4,860-foot, square-foot restaurant, relocate the existing barn on the site to be used as storage for the restaurant, and renovate the existing farmhouse into an office space. The applicant presented a preliminary site plan to the board at the September meeting and has provided revised submission for tonight's review. As the board may recall, the applicant received site plan approval for the same use in September of 2015 due to a site plan violation related to tree cutting within the 25-foot stream setback. The previous town and state approvals were voided, and the project was placed on hold. The applicant has since revegetated the stream setback in accordance with main DEP and has been reapproved by main DEP as well. Staff would like to note that given restaurants and professional offices are limited to 5,000 square feet floor area per unit of occupancy in the TVC three zoning district, the proposed division of occupancy to be permitted will need to be depicted on the building's floor plans. The applicant did not provide a clear division on the submitted floor plans that we're reviewing tonight. As indicated on the site and layout plan, the relocated barn is proposed to be considered as an accessory structure and will only be used as storage for the restaurant. As the board may recall, this was a significant review element during the 2015 review process, so the applicant should ensure the board that the accessory storage space will only be used for the proposed restaurant. The board may want to consider enabling the applicant to provide funds equal to the proposed sidewalk along Muzzy Road towards the town's multimodal reserve account. This approach would provide opportunities for better coordination and consideration of the sidewalk network within this area. The applicant has indicated that they are interested in this approach as well. Staff suggests that the applicant provide additional buffering measures along the eastern and western property lines in order to shield structures and vehicles from flooding properties. So the board should discuss this with the applicant tonight. The applicant has also provided several 3D renderings of the building inside as requested by the board, and staff encourages the applicant to incorporate the location of the restaurant hoods within these restaurant, within these renderings to ensure they will be screened from Muzzy Road. And before I turn it over to Angela to discuss some stormwater management details, we did receive one email from a butter today, and that was provided to the board for their consideration tonight. Now I'll turn it over to Angela.
Thanks. I just wanted to, I guess, comment that every time this has been in front of the board, I just, again, gonna say it again, that while DEP and Army Corps of Engineers provides permitting for this site in particular, they don't really focus on the local level flooding issues. They have a flooding standard, but I think some of the board members that were here from the beginning have heard, not only from this site, but other sites in this watershed, including Carrier Woods and others. We heard the whole neighborhood around Honin with the concerns of the downstream flows. And so I just wanted to, I guess, have it be part of the conversation again, while the neighbors are not here, because it's not part of what the ordinance says about notifications for the site plan, it's just something that we should keep in mind, I think, that there are some concerns with flooding downstream, just because of the amount of development in this watershed. And staff's comments had indicated about just asking for the hydrocap model and the files that we can kind of go through, just to kind of make sure we have a better idea of what's happening on the site, where there's quite a few, quite a bit of wetland fill and things like that, which this watershed has already seen a lot of. And while we can't put that all on this developer, I totally get that, we really should make sure we understand the total impacts downstream.
Thank you. Anything else from staff?
No.
Thank you. Thank you both. And I'll hand it over to the applicant's representative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Jim Fisher with Northeast Civil Solutions, and we've got the privilege tonight to be able to address you regarding the, hopefully drawing on the conclusion of the Asian Fusion Restaurant. As Jamel stated a couple of years ago, actually several years ago, we were initially before the board, without rehashing what he's already very effectively described to you by way of very quick backgrounds, we did have this site approved a couple of years ago. Then the general contractor went in and basically leveled everything. It was not a wooded site, it was developed, but there was a fair amount of woods in the area of the stream that you see on the, on the plan. They were specifically stated, you know, don't go there. This is a non-cut area, it was pretty much everywhere in the plans and the documents, and the GC went in and cut it all anyway. So hence, there was a big problem for everybody. And as Jamel stated, it was put on hold, as it should have been, and there was a revegetation plan, which was about a year and a half ago, that was submitted both to the DEP and the Army Corps, who were very, very into the town, who were very involved in taking a look at this, because they wanted to make sure that this kind of thing doesn't happen again. It's indeed a small stream, it just drains the wetland area that's literally right above us, right above this property, which is the back of what was the Walmart is now the Martins. Nevertheless, we still have an obligation to be able to make sure that we attenuate stormwater on our site, and we certainly don't exacerbate anything. So we wanted to come back to you now and state that, yes, indeed, it has gone more than one full season for the revegetation, and the DEP and the Army Corps have been out to the site and have taken a look at it and have approved it. In fact, it's easier to say that it's better than it was, it's not yet, but it certainly will be, because it was planted with completely native vegetation. And what was there before, as we all know, just from our own yards and in the woods around here, there's a lot of invasive species. Those species, if there was any benefit to cutting that out completely, they got rid of all the invasive species. Not funny, but because it shouldn't have been cut that close to the stream, but it was, and fortunately, what's been planted in its stead now is all native. And that planting has been also expanded a bit beyond what it was, in terms of there were several large trees out there, those were cut. Now there's about, there's a profligacy of about four times as many trees, albeit smaller, they have to grow, that were actually there and cut to begin with. So in the long run, and it's already started, the revegetation has taken root, and it's going to be quite nice. It's going to take a few years to get back to, or more to get back to the way it was, but it's certainly nice, and the DEP has been taking a look at it almost ad nauseam just to make sure that it was working. This past summer, they made sure that there were a couple of dying, of all the bushes and the trees that were planted there, there were a few that were meeting their demise, and they went in to replace them, which is exactly what we wanted to have happen. So everything is now, as far as the vegetation is concerned, pretty good. Now withstanding that fact, what I will do is, I want to point out that Mike Richman is here this evening from Custom Concepts, he is the architect involved, and to the extent that the board has any questions regarding the architecture, he'll be up here in just a few moments to be able to address that portion. And if you have any technical questions, Travis LePattelier from our office, PE from our office for this project is here to be able to answer those. As Jamel had pointed out, and I won't bore you with all the details, I know we were here a couple, three months ago explaining what was going on. Some of us were here originally, when we did the original approvals several years ago, or a couple of years ago. So I'll just kind of, I'm not going to read through this list, but I will address them, and then if you have any questions or comments when I'm finished, please feel free to ask them. Again, notwithstanding the architectural drawings under general zoning requirements, Mike will deal with that. We're talking about storage space being only used as an accessory to use to the restaurant. Yes, that was stated prior to, in the previous approval, and that's the same way it is right now. Our client has indicated that they have no intention of using that for anything other than storage. They've gone on record toward that, we're on record with that. So toward that end, assuming that the client adheres to everything that the board puts on it as a condition, then that is, on that extra structure, that barn, the old barn, is only going to be for storage. It will be not part of the restaurant at all. As far as the signage is concerned, that is something that we had always intended to come back to the board with. Our client is not yet ready to do the signage. You would like to be able to see, I'd like to get this further going a little bit, based on kind of where it was going at the time, before they cut everything out there and the overall project was put on hold. The point being is that we will be back to the board probably relatively soon, meaning sometime in the springtime or early summer, perhaps even a little bit earlier as far as the signage is concerned, but we're not addressing that now. That's completely separate. As far as the site plan review elements are concerned, we do request a waiver, as we had last time, and this is, this is the only waiver that we're requesting for this project, and that is the proximity of the entranceway for the access. There is, it's about, I think about 25 feet or so between the two access points. This is, as you're looking at the drawing, it's the access point to the, the butter to our right, and then our drive. They've both been there, in fact, our driveway was there far before the other one, but it doesn't make any difference, they're both there now. This is the only access that we've been able to got, and we have on the site. The other side of our parcel is where the stream actually comes in, and then we've got the actual farmhouse spec at the middle. So putting this right on the right side is the only means of access, which is where it's always been for quite a number of decades. But because we're coming for site plan review, we do need a waiver for the distance between those two driveways. And that is something that we can certainly discuss toward the end of my presentation here. As far as internal vehicle circulation is concerned, there was a question from the prior department about, or a concern basically, about them being able to get around with that template. We did rerun that template again. It's run for a, and you've got that information in your packets. It was run for a 40-foot-long vehicle. It does show that the turning radii does work. It's ideal, you know, for emergency vehicles not to have anything in the way, whether it's parked cars, or trees, or trash cans, or whatever it might be. In this particular case, we assumed that the entire parking lot would be completely full of cars and running, that's how it was designed, so we ran that template, and it does indeed work. And reran it again. It may not be absolutely ideal, they'd probably rather have a completely cleared field, like they've had at 2:00 in the morning kind of thing, but even if there is a situation that would require an emergency vehicle, basically a fire engine, to be able to get onsite, say in the evening when there's still a lot of vehicles there, they can certainly make that. And again, I call your attention to the template that's in your, in your packet that does show how that can be negotiated. As far as parking areas are concerned, we wanted to leave as many places as we could open for snow storage. Any of us remember, all of us remember, this past year, we had a heck of a lot of snow in the springtime, and there's a dearth of places in some, in some projects in which to be able to put it, and we wanted to make sure we had plenty of room. Toward that end, there was a comment about, from the staff, about the landscaping. We had a larger tree just on the front right-hand side of the access of the driveway that was a little bit more toward the parking area. We have, at staff's request, moved that toward the street, because they were concerned specifically about, let's keep that area open for snow storage if we can. We agreed, there's no reason not to. So the tree that we're proposing there is actually now right up along the street, and is basically in line with the other three trees that you see here in front of the building. That allows additional snow storage between that tree and the, the actual parking area. Also, this is important because we've got several areas on site for snow storage, one of them segues to a comment by staff regarding the back left-hand side of the parcel. As you can see in that section, thank you, that section of parking area that we have there, about half of that has a guardrail directly associated with it. The latter half, the latter four spaces there, do not have a guardrail there. We did that specifically because that is also a snow storage area. If we had a guardrail there, we wouldn't be able to put it in that area, and that would severely limit what we're looking at. This is not in the wetlands, it's in a buffer, that's generally speaking, associated with that. So there's plenty of room back there for snow storage, but obviously, we can't have any fences or guardrails or anything else in the way, because they would either crack, the snow plowing would crack right through it, or it would have to go up and over it, and that never really works. So that's the reason why we did not extend the guardrail further down toward the very back upper left of the, of the site. However, we did put the comment was, you know, you want to make sure, we should make sure that anybody who parks in those four spaces doesn't just start parking a little, or pull a little too far into the space and start leaving the pavement. So we do have curb stops that are there. Those are curb stops that are literally bolted into the, into the pavement, so they're not going anywhere. We didn't want to put an actual curb there, because that would redirect stormwater that otherwise would go there through the curb stops. So the curb stops are perfect, they'll literally do what they're supposed to in stopping the wheels of the vehicle. Even if they weren't there, they're only talking about two feet of relief in that area, and we don't want to extend anything out too much flatter, because we're now getting into that area that we, around the stream that we like to avoid. The curb stops take care of that, stops anybody, if they pull you that far, the tires will hit them, and they won't go any further, and that would take care of that issue. Under, let's see, under pedestrian ways, we certainly agree, as far as the sidewalk issue is concerned, there's no problem there. If the town would like the sidewalk built in front of this particular project, we can do that, but we've spoken with staff about that, and it was really determined that it would be better, as for many projects, to take the amount of money that would otherwise be required to build a sidewalk for the extent of this frontage, but apply it into the town's pool, so that the town can use that where it really sees it's most needed, and that eventually it might come back to this area, et cetera, but that's completely up to the town. We're happy to do it either way, whatever the staff wants, we're fine with that. Landscaping and the buffering, there's only really one issue along the right side of the, of the structure, or, excuse me, the right side of the lot, right where the parking spaces are. We've got a guardrail there as well. There are some plantings along that area, but in the back, the question was, can we augment a little bit more plantings? We really can't in order to be able to assist the stormwater from the other site. There is a French drain system that is running between the trees that you see that are just off of our property, that do themselves screen this property overall, and, and the actual edge of the parking area. And what happened is, there would be a pooling of stormwater in that particular area that would not actually be on our property, from the other property, as well as a tiny bit from us, because everything from the guardrail and the parking area that you see on the plan is directed to the subgrade detention system that is underneath that parking lot, except for the area that is not our property. So we created that with a French drain system that would allow the stormwater to be collected from the lower property that's immediately adjacent to ours, and then a tiny little bit that, you know, from rain that comes right down onto that area on our property. The point being is, it's a very narrow area, and we think drainage takes precedent, or dealing with stormwater takes precedent over a little bit of landscaping, only to the extent that we do have a wooden guardrail there, which is not unattractive. And there are several, as you can see, actually more than several planted trees, and these are, they're not old growth, but they've been there for probably the better part of a decade or so. So they're relatively good-sized right now, and they're already in that particular location. The point being is, the staff was saying, you know, didn't say you had to do that, but just take a look at it, augment if we can, we're happy to do it if we could. But again, I think that would stymie, if we plant any bushes or trees there, the root systems eventually would stymie the French drain system from working properly. So toward that end, we suggest that the landscaping that's already there and the guardrail would certainly allow an aesthetic, fairly aesthetically pleasing area on that side of the property. There was also a question about plantings and buffering along the westerly edge of the property, which is the other side. As you can see, again, that the, well, it's not on this particular plan, but on the specific planting, the replantings plan, you can see that that entire area, not just in the wetlands, but the buffers in that area as well, have been replanted with a revegetation system. So there's quite a lot of vegetation that's already in the area, that was planted about two years ago and in this past year, that's coming up rather nicely. Certainly invite you to take a look at it, but it's coming in pretty well. The point being is that there's quite a lot of vegetation that was planted along the westerly side. I'm not sure that we can really augment that any more than we already have. Under stormwater management, this is, this is where it gets fun, because we're able to say, and Angela can certainly chime in any time, from an engineering perspective, we're actually making this site better from a stormwater perspective than it was before. It's very easy to say, somebody who is a layman or who doesn't really understand stormwater management specifically, may say, wait a minute, that's, I'm being a little cynical here, you know, how's that going to improve anything? Because before we got here, everything on this property ended up flowing in directly into that stream. Now, a lot of this property was vegetated, and it's not going to be now. So what we did to be able to attenuate this, and we, and we got, it was the same thing that we had last time when it was approved, is because the subgrade detention system is completely under the parking lot and is oversized, what that means is it's going to take the stormwater that falls on the impervious surface areas, which is anything from roof lines to sidewalks to the pavement for the parking area and the streets, et cetera, and it's actually going to direct it to that subgrade detention system. Then what happens is, the detention system gathers that water in a significant rainstorm event, all of it, and then slows it down, stores it, as it's supposed to do, and releases it very, very slowly. It releases it toward the front of the properties, we're in a subgrade system, that then goes over to join the, laterally across the front of the property and joins the stream that's over there. Which means when it used to rain and all of the water just went in one big rush, right off into that stream, not just for this off into that stream, not just for this property, but anybody's property around that area, what we're doing now is redirecting it to a subgrade storage system that is releasing it very, very slowly and consistently, so that instead of somebody looking out their back, downstream, or just looking out their back door and saying, wow, that's a lot of water, there is a lot of water coming through there because it's, most of it is coming from the watershed that's above us. As far as our adding to that water, we're actually not adding to it in any greater amount as far as the volume and the velocity in which it's traveling into that stream. In fact, it's slowing that considerably. So from our perspective, if everybody, for instance, not that this is going to happen, but were to treat stormwater in a similar situation to this watershed, there wouldn't be any of those flooding problems because that stormwater is stored for the amount of time that it needs to be able to release slowly. Under architectural and signage, I'm going to ask Mike Rich, oh, there's one other thing I would like to address, and that was the comment about the, the outfall for the, the stormwater that's going toward the stream. We've got a, an outfall level spreader, which essentially means that when there's an outfall from a parking area of stormwater, it goes into the subgrade catchment system and then comes out through a culvert somewhere. It has a propensity, if it's not otherwise treated, as it were, treated at that site, to cause, it's kind of referred to as almost like a plunge pool, but it plunges out, and if we're unstopped or untreated somehow, it would start eroding, creating its own little channel and going into the stream. We don't want that. Erosion and sedimentation control is key. So what happens typically, not just on this site, is we create and design these stabilization devices for outfalls, so that when the water comes out of a culvert, or comes down a channel, wherever it might be, it's designed to hit this riprap area, which is a little bit of a hole that's filled up with the riprap, and then it spreads out. It's like a V shape, so that when this water all fills up in this very mini detention system, by the time it fills up gradually yet evenly to the top, it's now spread out over the 25-foot level spreader at the end. So it's coming into a pool initially, it fills this up, and then it goes in a 25-foot wide stream, bam, basically, it flows over the bank. That's the whole essence of a level spreader. And that worked quite well in this situation, so that we don't have any of that scouring effect and no erosion that would go in because of that into that stream area. I'd like to introduce Mike Richman. He will discuss about the, some of the architectural plans based on the comments that you have. And I'll be back up and certainly address any comments or questions that the board has. Thank you.
Mike Richman, Custom Concepts Architecture. I'll be quite brief with this because for the most part, the architecture is very similar to it was on the first round. So if you don't mind, I'd like to, I brought some pretty pictures, which of course I have to show.
You okay if I line them? Oops, line them up right here? Or that would be up there?
That's all right. That's, that's fine. It's hard for the camera to catch everything anyway.
So I actually have just five quick points to make. The first is that the, the bulk of the design is pretty much the same as before, with the exception that because of the realignment of the site, due to what happened before, we basically had to angle the building, which I actually think is probably a better end result because of the angle of the lot and the adjacent building.
It's really more for the TV than for the room.
Is that working?
We can hear, we can hear you fine, but yeah.
Essentially, forgive my, my highlighting, but this was the first round, which is, you could see, here's the farmhouse up front, and everything was in line or ephemeral to that because of the new sightlines. Now, the farmhouse is still where it is. We're not moving that, obviously, and this is angled to align with the lots and the building next to it. With that move, the geometry of the kitchen area and the exterior eating area in the back have changed as well, basically just to modify and accommodate the setback to the stream in the back. So the kitchen now has a jog in it, and the exterior seating area in the back is much smaller than it was originally. The right-hand portion of the porch on the front of the existing farmhouse, the original design a few years ago, that porch was the connection to this new building. Because of the squishing of the lot, we really couldn't do that anymore. And again, I think it's probably for the best. So we now have, we now have a connection towards the back. So the porch basically is as-is, as it exists today, and we do have the covered connection in the back. So the only real physical connection between these two buildings is this exterior covered walkway and a fence that has a gate in it, but that's literally a regular fence. Another big shift that I think is a very positive element is that the, the exterior seating area in the back on the previous rendition was a patio, and in order to get that patio, we were building up a pretty substantial retaining wall, and that was all approved. With this new layout, we're not going to have that. We're going to treat this more like a deck, almost like a deck that you'd see in a house. It's going to come right off the building. It would meet all applicable codes, but the earth underneath it would allow just a slope much more natural. So I think the end result will be not only much more environmentally friendly, but just look a lot better. It'll look a lot less imposing on the site. The last point was materials. The existing farmhouse is pretty much, it's all white, if you've seen it. The roof is pretty much a black composite. The proposed stonework that we're looking at on the front would be something similar to this, very simple grayish tones, earth tones. We, we really want this building to, to sort of set into the environment. And the wood that you can see in various portions of the elevations, mostly in the back, would be something along this line, just natural wood. And we're actually looking at different composites or even actual wood with obviously a maintenance component to that. So very simple aesthetics from the exterior. My last comment, I guess, would be related to the hood venting. At this point, we really have not had an engineer design the kitchen yet, and hence we don't know exactly what the hood system would require or would be. I will say that we purposely placed the kitchen as far back away from the road as we could. As you can see in the design, it's way over here. Here's the road. There's the kitchen. So I don't know the distance of that, but 100 feet, I mean, we're as far back as you can get. So I think the, the screening that's taking place is just naturally by the farmhouse, which is large. It blocks most of this, and the ridge lines of the new addition are mostly going to block whatever happens there. But we can also work very closely with staff when that day comes to make sure that it's And that is, that is all. You can answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Do you have anything else from the team?
Uh, we'll do that.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment? Come on up and introduce yourself.
Larry Hartwell, Nine, Puritan Drive. Bailey's Bait House, bait shed, the garage barbecue, and the, what's that river up here?
None such.
Not, yes. The three of them, the three of those have something in common, parking or lack of adequate parking. And I know those folks were here like last year with, before the council to allow parking on the streets. So I don't really know anything about this one as far as the amount of parking is concerned, but I hope that there's an adequate number of parking spaces for the size of the restaurant.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. So we'll turn to board discussion. I, I just want to briefly note, to start off, that, you know, it certainly seems like the applicant's been very responsive and, and definitely heading in the right direction. Some of the, some of the changes and responses, as I, as far as I understand, are actually reflected in materials that were just delivered to the, to staff, I think, this morning. So is that, is that correct, female? I don't want to misstate that. So I do want to say, and we'll see where board discussion goes, that, you know, given that, and it's, you know, that obviously doesn't give staff or the board time to sort of review and digest those materials, that, you know, we may not be quite ready tonight for approval, but that said, we'll see where discussion goes and maybe it ends up to where it's teed up for, if not a consent item for the next agenda, at least it's much closer and would be a better position to, to be in a position for approval next time. But I just wanted to put that out there, given, you know, given the lead times and turnaround times on reviewing materials and so forth, but it does sound like the applicant's been very responsive. So with that, I'll defer my further, for other comments until everyone else has had a chance to, to speak. Robin, do you want to start off?
Yeah, sure. I'd like to applaud the applicant for, for really finding the silver lining in the situation, both architecturally and, and site, just site layout. And I also applaud you for doing some innovative underground stormwater management. And I guess, can you just point me to where the stormwater outfall is? I mean, am I looking at the right place? You know, because I'm hearing that it's going directly into the river, but I don't know. Can you just point me to where the outfall is, that where you're going to put the level of spreader?
Sure.
So the level, the level spreader is actually, uh, right up here, and that actually is just directing stormwater that comes off-site into site. The actual outfall for the detention is into the street, which then connects into, I think it connects to the catch basin there.
The common line in the street.
Yeah. So, yeah, the, the level spreader we're talking about is actually, is just collecting and diverting flow from off-site.
Can you just speak into the microphone? Because I have a couple other questions for you.
I'm sorry about that.
No, you're fine. I, this is more, it, it's, it's not, I guess the other question or sort of comment that I'll have for you all as we move forward, it was sort of alluded to in staff comments, which is thinking about flooding in this area, and I, and I really appreciate sort of the in-depth overview that you gave us about how the system will work, and I just want to have assurances that we're treating both run-on from the system, from, let's see where it says, consider, okay. Number five in our stormwater management ordinance for site plan, it does say that drainage system shall be designed so as to not impact streets, adjacent properties, downstream properties, and local soils and vegetation. The system shall also consider and incorporate the upstream runoff. So what I'm hearing is run-on, what you would be, that may pass over the site. So can you just comment on that if you are incorporating that?
Yep, yep. So the, we're, we're basically, any flow from off-site, we're trying to divert around our site. That's what the French drain will do.
Okay.
It'll take flow from the adjacent site, divert it around, and then we also are providing those.
So you're not attenuating it at all?
No, we're not, we're not, we're not adding extra attenuation to any off-site flows, but anything from the new development, that's, all of that will be detained and.
I'm going to just ask you to work with staff on that because then if you go to Section G, it does say that adequate provisions shall be made for the control, collection, and disposal of all stormwater runoff from the site itself. And these plans shall be designed to complement the hydrology and the natural features of the site and shall not cause adverse impacts to abutters, downstream properties, or receiving waters. So what I'm getting at here is that in this area, we've had significant amount of outcry from residents, abutters about the flooding issues. And they didn't come to the planning board when they built the first development, and they didn't come to the development when they, you know, had issues for the second development. But I just want, I want you to know that you're in a very sensitive location, both from a natural resource perspective, but also a flooding perspective. So just meeting the DEP standards may not be enough in this area. So whether it's, you know, 80% treatment or 95% treatment, I just want you to understand that staff and the board may, may need you to go to these G standards and say that collection and disposal of all stormwater may need to be attenuated.
Well, so the, I, I wasn't, I didn't do this particular design, but as far as I know, it, the town's regulations are to meet pre versus post total peak flow for a 25-year storm, is that, yeah, so.
That's the second, that's the sentence in between the first and the last one that I read you, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. So, so any, any stormwater that's actually flowing, that's coming onto the site, you know, with the new pavement, with the new roof lines and everything, that is all being detained onsite and, and released to meet the precondition peak flows. As far as off-site, you know, as far as any flows from off-site, if they were sort of coming into our detention system, then we would have to design it to actually hold that, but since we're sort of diverting flow around our site, it's, it's not making anything better, it's not making anything worse.
Okay. So please, just, as I mentioned, just work with staff on that. Provide them your hydro pad so that that can be reviewed. And not that it's, you know, it's, it, it's just very much appreciated, and please understand that it's just a highly sensitive area. But I definitely applaud you for all the measures that you have taken proactively. With respect to the, with respect to the snow storage area in the northwest portion of the site there, I'm worried about how close you are as a, as a buffer. So are the, are the trees planted a certain distance away from the stream kind of a thing? So that the snow will basically be constricted outside the buffer to the stream, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so what I'd like to see in the long-term maintenance plan then, is a way that you're going to make sure that that area, like after the snow stays there over the winter, it packs all the vegetation down. And that takes a toll on basically the form and function that that buffer plays to the stream. So we'll need in your long-term maintenance plan and landscaping plan, how you plan to refresh that on an annual basis. Does that make sense? I'm looking at staff, too. Does that make, make sense? Because I just, I worry about it being so close there. I love the, I love the idea of the curb stops, too, so that you're, you're sort of encouraging the sheet flow, which is one of the best ways that you can sort of be proactive with your stormwater management. So please encourage, please include the removal of the curb stops in and out every year, too, in the long-term maintenance plan. Because, you know, even though you all are here saying, yep, this is what we're going to do every year, it doesn't get maintained. Angela?
Actually, can I ask, through the chair, can I ask, I guess to follow up with Robin's, I think it's something that the board might want to talk about, is the curb stops, because looking at how this is graded and how this drainage works.
Yeah.
It actually, all the paved surfaces drain within, and then they slope off pretty steep.
Oh, okay.
So what happens is it slopes off and then gets collected into a point source. So it gets into a pipe, and then it becomes a one-point source rather than draining sheeting. It does not sheet.
Oh.
It goes, so it's collected from the runoff above the site.
Okay.
Into a pipe, as well as off that side slope into the pipe.
Oh.
So that's where I think staff was suggesting curb line you could do without interfering with drainage in that, that back corner and along the back side. So it'd be a matter of, like you said, for winter maintenance, how is a curb stop going to hold up? It'd be worth a conversation if you guys are comfortable with a curb stop, or if the curb line is something you want to request, just because I, I don't think it interferes with the drainage. It's more of maintenance.
Well, and you raise a good point, too, Angela, in that the curb stop can also be a line of defense for, say, vehicle fluids that spill or something like that, for sheeting off kind of thing. off, kind of a thing. So I could see the plus or the minus, but I don't necessarily want to dictate the means and methods, kind of a thing, but I think Angela does bring up good points to raise, because I was looking at it as a sheet flow sort of scenario. So thank you for correcting me, I appreciate it. I'm not, and I guess I'd have to take, I'll have to take a closer look at it when it comes back to us regarding sort of the drainage and things like that. But just have an idea that we're going to be fairly, I think we need to be fairly rigorous with respect to section G and the site plan, as far as, you know, looking at, very creatively at the town standards in addition to the DEP requirements and standards. I'm pretty sure that that's all that I have for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Robin. Rachel?
Yeah. This has come a long way, and I think we're almost there. So what we're down to now is perhaps some of the little picky things that we see, or that I see, and I have a couple of questions. You said that the deck in the back is going to be open beneath, correct? What's going to be underneath the deck? What sort of fill, grass, mulch?
That's an excellent question. I would have to, hopefully not. That's a good question. We'd have to develop that further. Something natural.
Okay. And because I'm also looking at the picture of the deck walk on the side, which is not covered, actually, sections of the deck are not covered. So in the rain, the water's going to go down and through the deck, and it's going to end up caught underneath, or pooling underneath. So you need to really think about how that's going to, how that decking is going to work in the rain.
Yeah. Excellent point. It would be graded properly. Anything that comes through is going to grade out.
The other, another question that's kind of similar is you also have steps going down in between the farmhouse office and the restaurant, going down to the back, and they're kind of steps to no place. What's the purpose of those stairs? And what's to stop people off the deck from walking down, walking along the stairs, finding their way down to the rail fence, and wandering around? Is that actually a planned purpose, or are you going to just have stairs to no place?
No, that's a very good point. The stairs were actually more intended for the staff, who'd be utilizing the farmhouse, and they would hopefully not have to rely on gates, but at least signage. So no, the intention is not to have restaurant patrons walking the property like that.
So that goes to one of the issues that was raised, that there really needs to be a clear distinction between the office and the restaurant area. And then that raises the other question, or another question, of the garden that you're showing in between the office and the restaurant, and what's going in that garden?
We have clients who feel very strongly that that garden could be something beautiful for all to see. So they have, I don't know exactly what the details of it are, but they're very excited about having something there.
Perhaps something comes back to us that does a little explanation of what that's going to be, because it really is, it's integral to the landscaping. And I could see that it could indeed be a very stressful place.
Correct.
But I think we need a little detail there. The, what else did I have? Oh, I love the way you've kept the integrity of the farmhouse and the New England vernacular, as we're calling it. It's a New England farmhouse, and you've kept that, and that's what people see when they first come in. And then to the restaurant, so I think there's a harmony of all three segments, from the farmhouse to the restaurant to the barn. So I compliment you on the work that's done there. I have a question. You said to the west, on the western side of the stream near the abutters. We did get a letter from one of the abutters that had concern about the headlights from the restaurant, or from cars coming into the parking space. And what is, you said that that was, there was plantings in there? Could you be more descriptive? Because there is, from the abutter, there was a request that we consider talking to you about a privacy fence.
Between the nearest area of the headlight wash and the, I don't know who the abutter is, but in the nearest building that you actually see on the plant, is the abutter, that's well over 100 feet. And you can see where the stream is. On 25 feet on either side of that stream has been, and we've probably all seen it, but it's been very heavily planted, revegetated.
With what?
With all native species. Trees, bushes, shrubs, grasses, pretty much everything. This is where the DEP got involved and said, okay, you've denuded the site, now let's plant it, and here's the planting plan. And so everything there passed muster first, native vegetation for what's going to end up growing up in a variety of anything from 40-foot-tall trees, given a decade or more in the future.
Could you include that on your landscaping plan?
It's already in there.
Right now, all I'm seeing is a blank area.
Okay. This whole section, I mean, yes, we can do that, but, yes, we can do that.
Okay. Because it would be helpful both for us, since it's just simply blank. And I think for the abutter to be clear that there is going to be growth in screening, because I do remember when this first came up and the abutters came, and the owner indicated a willingness to work with them to ensure that there was proper landscaping, some sort of screening ultimately, that was going to, that's going to prevent them from getting that headlight wash. Now, I know where the moose is, the moose building is, they've got a privacy fence, and I'm not concerned about that. But we do have at least one abutter where there is a potential for headlights from the parking spaces to the back of the barn, from washing over, from the headlights going over there to their property. But if you have good landscaping, then I'm comfortable with the split rail.
We can certainly show that for you.
Thank you.
And we did share a copy of that email with your colleagues, so that does.
Great, thank you.
And I think that's it. As I said, we're down to some small details.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Rick?
I have a follow-up to Rachel's.
I missed something.
Yeah, no, no, you didn't. I did. I missed something. Can you tell, show me where Spring Street is? Is that Spring Street to the left of the development?
Yes.
Okay. And you're going to provide the vegetation plan through there. Are they evergreens, or are they, you know, are they, vegetation's going to lose its leaves in its winter and basically be sticks?
No, it's a combination of both, and it's already been planted. It was planted almost two years ago.
That's wonderful. Is it going to be sticks, or is it going to be something that headlights aren't going to go through?
No, there's a variety of both. I mean, we wanted to put some deciduous trees in there, because they typically grow taller. And then there's coniferous trees as well, and then there's low bush as well, which is pretty much only about eight months out of the year at best. So during the wintertime, there is some coniferous trees in there, but a lot of it isn't denuded. But it is, you know, well over 100 feet between that as well, and those plantings.
It's 100 feet from the edge of the parking lot to the house?
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Take a look at the buffer, just to give you an idea.
Yeah, I mean, you know what? I mean, I have, I'm all for development, and I think it's wonderful what you're doing, and I really like what you've done with the architecture. And I can see myself frequenting this establishment on a regular basis, but I'm always concerned about the folks that were there first. And not to say that that should inhibit you from doing what you want, as long as you follow the rules, but it is always a concern to me. So I will actually probably, I drive by there every day anyway, I could just pull in the parking lot, or go over to Spring Street and take a look. But that's going to be one of the things that I'm going to ask you about again when you come back.
Okay.
So I want you to be able to do what you want with your lot, and I think this restaurant's going to be great, and you're doing a good job of following all the rules and regulations. But if it's a simple fix, you know, it's not even worth us the time, you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
Okay. And then the other, only thing I had was the, can you, can we, I know you're looking for a waiver for that 25 feet, and I'm probably fine with that, but I can't tell, and I should know, because like I said, I drive through there all the time. What is that driveway, what is that establishment next door that you're within 25 feet of the driveway?
It's Creative Imaging, I believe is the name of the company, and they are.
It's a graphic arts type place?
Yes, exactly. That's where they distribute most of their materials.
Okay.
Quick comment. I know the last time it was.
You can come on up, please. Thanks.
I know two years ago, when we came back, when we came first with the project, we had looked extensively at a single entrance, and our entrance would be off of that. We would close the second one. But they refused to let us share an access, so that was the reason we had to create a second one here.
Yeah. Okay, well, we haven't, as a board, we haven't heard any, at least I haven't got any information from them. So again, I don't have an issue as myself with the 25 feet, as long as it's okay with the town engineer. And I think that's really all I have. Other than that, I would like to say that the architecture, I think, is very well done. That's all I have.
Thanks, Rick. Nick?
Colleagues did a wonderful job of covering most of these items. I'll do two quick comments, though, on the back deck area. Do you intend to have any lighting back there for evening dining? Some wall-mounted lights or sconces, if you would? And would they impact your lighting sheet?
Well, it wouldn't impact the lighting sheet, because we're so far from the actual edge of the property on that side, from the lighting plan. I believe there are some wall-mounted lights. I don't think there's any, the deck's pretty narrow, but, so there are some wall-mounted lights just for safety, but I don't think there's any individual separate lighting that's out there.
You don't see it altering the sheet that we have here, the lighting plan that we have? You don't see it impacting the wall?
No. And if we were 20 feet away, it would be a different story, but we're considerably further within that.
Okay. And then, oh, boy, there's only two, and I lost half a minute. Oh, I wanted to address the parking. There was a question whether or not there was enough spaces, and you have exactly as much as prescribed by the zoning ordinance, so, which is good. I wish you as much success as those other locations that have been mentioned that currently have parking problems. And I think it will be a recurring theme here in Scarborough, because this is a great place to live, to play, to, you know, go out, eat, and have some fun. You know, I, just as a general public comment, not related to your application at all, I would like to see, you know, somewhere down the line, it filter over to a wider discussion about planning for success, which, you know, we hope you have it. And, you know, being ready as a town to, you know, incorporate success, so we don't get into parking issues. Again, always be mindful of our chairman's worry that we're going to pave over most of Scarborough, which, you know, in some instances, we probably have too much parking in this area. So just food for thought, but I did want to address at least the comment from the public, whether or not there was enough spaces here. So that's it.
Thanks. Roger?
Sure. I don't really have much to add. I think everybody else has covered everything quite nicely. I do want to comment on the architecture. I think it looks terrific. I'm very eager to see something actually happen there. I would ask you to take a look at the email that we received regarding the abutter there. That's the only concern I really have to add, is, you know, if you can come up with some low evergreen-type things, plantings, to, you know, complement the rail fence, take a look, just take a look at that and see, because I know there's plantings out there now that's been restored. But when I drive by there, it still seems very sparse out there, and I know it's going to take a while for that to really develop. So in the meantime, I'd ask you just to take a look at that, at one section. I'm not saying all along the rail fence, just that portion between the parking lot and the abutters.
Okay.
That's all.
Thanks. Yeah, as one of the privileges of being chair, is a lot of the good points get made before it gets to you. But, and I agree with most of what, pretty much everything that my colleagues have said, you know, starting with commending you for all the work you've done on this, with the architecture and the site planning, and we're all cognizant of the fact that this engineering team sort of inherited some of these issues, and you've sort of been kind of cleaning things up, and we greatly appreciate that, and realize it's been a, you know, it's kind of reopened various cans of worms that you've had to work through, and appreciate the elements that are already incorporated into your stormwater planning and the site planning, and certainly the architecture. Sounds like there are some things to just sort of confirm and follow through on with staff and others in terms of stormwater, as has been noted. There was also a note, and would appreciate your response on the auto-turn simulation with the fire department. I would, I guess I would list that as one other thing to kind of button up, just to kind of close the loop on, so to speak, to make sure that the fire department is fully kind of signing off on that, on that latest run. I appreciate Nick's comments on parking, and yes, I have definitely been a pretty consistent voice on not wanting to overdo it on parking. We have a lot of over-parking in town, particularly with some of the more kind of retail, big-box type areas. It is true, though, that we have had some challenges more recently with restaurants, and it's been, in some ways, a great problem to have, that we're finally getting some restaurants and bars and places like that, and this would be, sounds like another great addition to that. But as Nick noted, you're meeting the, under the zoning requires 61 spaces, you're showing 61, and that's great. And maybe that is something for the town more broadly to look at going forward for these certain types of high-intensity uses, where there are times when there can be overflow. Obviously, things like snow removal become especially critical during the winter months with things like that. So again, as was noted, there were some materials that I know were provided to staff this morning, and we're seeing some things for the first time. It all looks like it's heading in the right direction, and I'm fully confident that you'll be in a good place for next time. And is there any additional feedback that you'd appreciate from us at this point to enable you to finish your homework for next time?
Not so much, no, thank you, Corey. Not so much feedback as it is just a general comment as well. You're obviously entitled to ask for anything, and we will give you whatever you ask for. Some of the things that we did not include in the packets were those that were supplied last time, and to the extent that we supplied them last time, if they didn't change, we didn't put them back in this time.
That's fair.
Just one of those examples, for instance, is the French drain that's on the right side of the property. We don't have to put it there. That's actually dealing with some of the overflow from the abutting property that would otherwise come and onto a very small section of our property, and rather than just leave it there, we designed the French drain system to be able to grab that and then put it into the stormwater system, which flows directly into the stream. So there are a few, and then the hydroCAD matter, for instance, because of the cutting on this, and then the revegetation and the redoing the site, it's actually slightly smaller than it was last time, the impervious surface area. So the hydroCAD metal, which we kept the same, is actually, it's in a positive direction, and we've gone in a positive direction. We can certainly supply that to you, that's not the issue. But when we decrease something that was already reviewed and approved, we just didn't think that that would be germane for, to take a look at it all over again when you already looked at it once. But we can certainly do that if you wish. And we will do that.
And I, you know, I'll certainly defer to staff on, you know, what seems most appropriate to include, based on, based on their own review and comments, and based on board comments. And going forward, if any individual board members have, you know, specific items that they. specific items that they would like to see or would like a refresher on, I encourage you to contact staff, and they can, they can presumably provide it.
No, everything here we got this evening is absolutely fine, we'll, whatever you want, we'll, I'm happy to give to you.
Great, well, look forward to seeing it come to fruition.
One more question, Corey, if I may, as far as the waiver is concerned, I know we got one, okay, makes sense, actually, two comments toward that end, do I presume correctly that, and this is not a voting situation, obviously, but are there any issues as far as that waiver is concerned? And we can discuss that further next time when we're here, too, I just wanted to make sure that there was nothing.
Not as far as I'm concerned, and I know a couple of folks did specifically mention that, I don't know if anyone else wants to chime in at this point, if there's anything...
Okay, okay, we're good.
All right.
Thanks very much.
Very much. Luck.
All right, as previously noted, item number 10, Infinity Credit Union, was tabled at the request of the applicant, so presumably that will be coming back next time. Number 11, staff report.
All right, well, it's not 11, so I have quite a few things to say, and hopefully they'll make sense this time.
Doesn't need to stretch it out.
I'll be quick, I'll brief, as brief as I can be. I'll just sort of go down a list here. We did provide the resubmission for the Scarborough Downs master plan for Phase Two to the board members tonight, just a reminder that that meeting is being held, their workshop's being held Tuesday, December 18th at 7:00 PM, to review those plans. Thank you for your attendance there for additional meeting. We do have a few mylar's to sign tonight, those are the Scarborough Downs Phase One subdivision plans, the applicant provided those to staff today, so please sign those before you go. On Thursday night, December 13th at 6:00 PM, there will be a public meeting to discuss the Route 1 corridor study that Scarborough's working with Saco on, it's an access management, bike pad, complete streets, overall look at the Route 1 corridor. So the first meeting, public meeting, is Thursday night, and that's just a meeting to solicit public input on the plan, and we hope to see a lot of folks there for that. The Piper Shores Dorado Project Site Walk, I've heard from four board members that they can attend, the Site Walk on January 12th at 8:00 AM, it is a Saturday, so if you can't attend, please do let me know, so we can reschedule that, but I think it'd be good to get that on the books, so I appreciate you guys applying. A few more, on January 9th, between 6:00 and 7:00, the council has requested a joint workshop with the planning board on the Piper Shores Contract Zone Amendment Project, so the council is seeking board attendance, there are more details to come from staff, I just wanted to sort of get that on your calendars, if you can make it. We do have three applications to fill in vacant spots for the planning board for, starting next calendar year, there's two vacant spots with Corey's departure after tonight, so their staff's pretty excited with, we have three applications for two spots, just wanted to let you guys know. In January, we will, the board will be electing new officers, so start to think about, start to think about that over your holiday break, and just as a reminder, the next board meeting is on January 14th, 2019, and I just wanted to thank Corey for all of his hard work to this board, I know I've only been here for 14 months, but you've certainly made my job easier, so thank you for your leadership, I appreciate it.
Thank you, same to you.
I don't know, Angela has any staff report?
I think you covered everything imaginable.
All right.
What time is that, January 9th?
I think it's to be determined, but sometime between 6:00 and 7:00 PM. Still working out the details.
On the Site Walk at Piper Shores, are they going to have balloons there?
They are, they're going to fly the balloons at the approx, at the height of the Commons Building, which is that four, four or five-story sort of mixed-use building that we talked about last time.
Okay, good.
Yep.
I'll bring back memories for you. Right, were you on the board when they did Piper Shores?
No, I was not, I wasn't the original one.
Oh, you, you ought to come on the white.
If I happen to drive by on Sunday, I'll take a look.
No administrative amendments, correct?
Nope.
Any planning board correspondence? Okay, planning board comments?
I have one.
Gavin?
Actually, it's another request, well, first, the comment, I'd like to thank Doreen for doing a really great job updating our zoning notebooks, that's really great, and second, thank you so much, Corey, for your service, and the third is a request to think about going to electronic calendar invitations, because I don't know how many of us use their e-calender, but if we could send out, I mean, that's like six things, and I just looked at my calendar, I only have two of the six on my calendar, so if we could send them out to everyone, that would be really great. I would appreciate it, thank you all.
You're thinking like Outlook invites?
Yeah.
Yeah, that actually would be really helpful.
Yeah.
Awesome, happy to do that.
If it works.
Thank you.
Because, and I, I need to give you a different email address, too. We can talk about that later.
You don't want to give out your email address right now?
Yeah, I'll give it out, hold on. And my social security number. I got LifeLock, I'm not worried.
And a credit card. Is it still AOL.com?
Any other planning board comment?
Just publicly just say thank you for everything that you've done as a chairman, as a board member, as a leader. Community should be really proud to have had you here, still have you here, just in a changing capacity, but you're going to be missed, and I think everyone at home, for those that have just caught on to watching this great board that we have here, Corey's the, Corey's the reason we get a lot, a lot of our stuff done professionally, and I think you've helped, I think you've helped this town tremendously, and it's big shoes to fill, really appreciate it, and wish you the best of luck.
Second.
Yeah, I would like to echo that as well.
Only favor.
Oh, can you do that a minute?
You know, I do, I do appreciate, as a citizen, I appreciate your effort that you put in all these years, and how many more years can you serve on the long-range planning?
I don't remember off the top of my head, it's a little, it's a little different.
Okay, all right, well, I mean, I think it's really appreciated, because it's good to get citizens involved in a very constructive way, which you have, so I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, I've, I've appreciated having this opportunity, and it's been a great way to stay engaged and have a voice in the town, and be kind of a conduit for things, and I've had the privilege of being able to work with a lot of different, great board members from a lot of different perspectives, and, you know, Jamel said it made his job easier, certainly, I want to give another big nod to staff for making my job and every board member's job easier, and having been on both sides of the podium, so to speak, as I think some others have as well, in different jurisdictions, I can honestly say that the staff here, the planning staff and the town staff in general are definitely, definitely cut above and really help to set a very professional tone and make sure that we're all prepared, and I think, you know, give, just adds that much more credibility to the whole process and hopefully for the general public as well. I will be continuing to, to serve with the Long Range Planning Committee, at least that's my, that's my intent going forward, and I'll definitely be following things, and I'm sure I'll be in good hands and look forward to seeing how things go, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. One other quick note, Jamel mentioned the Route 1 study in the meeting, encourage anyone on the board or neighbors, anyone paying attention, there's also a survey, which I think is still up, the folks can, can complete fairly quick and painless, and I think as with the comp plan process and other things, the more input, the better, so, all right, with that, I'll move to a jar.
Second.
Second.
Third. Thank you.
The last gavel pounding, Corey.